The United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. And this would be, our consent agenda is up next. We have 10 minutes for the pledge.
Yeah, we just spoke too fast.
We did that way too fast. Okay, consent agenda. Any questions from folks? Take a look, you've seen everything on there.
Are we slightly ahead at 6:59?
Oh, we are.
There you go.
It's okay.
Chris?
Now it's seven o'clock.
The only question I had on the consent agenda is, I just see that status of the general fund is listed. Do we normally vote on the status of the general fund? I feel like that's an update, but do we typically vote on that?
We've put it there with the link. Remind me.
I know you remember, we voted on it.
Yeah.
No, I, yeah, I don't think so.
I don't, I actually, I believe the last conversation was that it was an update.
I think it's been an informational sub item or something.
Right, I feel like it's, it's an update, it's part of the, you know, Q4 financial update, but not necessarily something we vote on as part of the, okay.
More than anything. Yep. Yeah, thank you.
Right, right.
So I just, just let it jump.
It was on our main one.
Was it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay. Did? Déjà vu, sorry.
And March.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. I will, I will defer.
Thank you.
To wiser expertise.
I think you're right.
Okay.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as outlined.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Okay, all in favor? Okay, that's six zero. Next up is public comment. I know we're a couple of minutes early on that. So Catherine's going to, she's gonna do a dance for us, a traditional Riverdance.
Improv. Bit of Riverdance?
Yes.
Riverdance.
She's the lady of the dance.
The end of the year talent show. May now commence.
Oh, boy.
It was challenging.
It is way too early to be this punchy, folks.
No, no. We don't have anyone, anybody here in person. If anyone on Zoom is here for public comment, raise your hand on Zoom. If I see anybody come in in the next few minutes, we can also, we can circle back to that as well. So we want to make sure people have a chance, given that we are a couple of minutes ahead of the posted agenda schedule. And we do have someone with their hand raised on Zoom, so we will bring in our commenter. Is the projector on? Yeah, it is, okay. Hi, good evening. Yes, we can hear you, go ahead.
Do you want to wait for more people to join so they can hear about the public comments?
If you would like to, we can circle back to public comment in a few minutes after our informational updates. If you would like to wait.
Yeah, I just feel like, you know.
I'm gonna give you that choice, I don't.
Because they do want to hear the other public comments?
Sure. Yep, that, if that's what you would like to do, I will keep you, we'll keep you here on the line. And we will circle back after our informational updates. Sound good? Okay, sure, thank you. All right, let's go on to informational updates, superintendent updates.
So I did send out the, the survey this afternoon for, if people are interested in participating in the advisory group. We're looking to try to hold two or three meetings between July 18th and August 19th. So I ask people to say if they, what their preferred availability would be, realizing that some people might not be available in that window. But that's the idea is.
In person.
What's that?
In person.
I was assuming that it would be in person, yes, I was. And so, you know, we'll see, and hopefully in the survey, I also tell people that, you know, we'll reach out to the, you know, people that, that we select to participate before the end of the month. So that they'll know. And then the goal is to have a couple of brainstorming sessions where we can look at potential priority areas, get feedback, and help present that information for the leadership team. And then the leadership team will actually draft the goals and the action items, and we'll be working on that. So I sent that out along with an update, just again congratulating all of our recent alums, you know, congratulating everybody who's transitioning to a different school. And all of our students in general and staff for, I think, was, you know, there were definitely bumpy moments, and it was not the year that we had anticipated. But it, but I think it's been a successful year, and, you know, we can look forward to next year. I did notice, and I don't, I know Valerie, you participated in the access to town meeting work. Sitting at town meeting this year, it was, it was very clear to me that we don't have a large, I think, representation of the school, school families there. So I want to start thinking, you know, are there things that, that I can do to better communicate that? Are there things that we can do to help that process? Because I think that's really important.
You know, I did, it did occur to me, I think Saturday mornings is just a really hard time for families, you know, in spite, there's just so many sports. And you here, I mean, I know once kids start, you need one parent to take one kid to this game and another, so it's not even like you can give all of them to one parent and so.
Yeah, it might, I mean, because the access committee did a great job, you know, trying to look at all that information and see what they could do. And, and, and so, and there are some of those recommendations that I think are still, you know, in play.
So the resident survey specifically shied away from asking 800 people to weigh in on when is the best day and time, because it's, what's, what's perfect for somebody is going to be different for everybody. You're not going to find a majority that way. But I think they're actually meeting right now, and I think part of the sort of longer term nudge to the select board is to consider when is the most appropriate time moving forward. Because it really used to be March, right? And then the last couple of years with COVID, it's been June. So to really look at March versus June and when is the best month, I think it's sort of all on the table at this point.
But the other stuff worked great?
Yeah, yeah. I think there is, I hope that it felt like a focus was on sort of efficiency, accessibility, welcoming, all that stuff, I think.
I did, and we did, that we had, we had, it was one group, but I know represented a couple of families utilizing the family area, and I thought that seemed great.
That's awesome.
Which I thought that was a really helpful thing, that maybe more people now that they've kind of know that that is an option, that might be something that they can take advantage of. I also would like to see if, you know, there are ways that we can start in the fall to real, even encourage our seniors, right? Because our, the graduates really, they, the major, the vast majority of them are all old enough to, to now actually vote and participate in that. And so it would be an interesting way to kind of see if there's a way we can get them there.
One thing we've talked about, we talked about in the ATM meetings, we're putting the meeting date on the school calendar.
Oh.
To, the, the problem is, I think it never really happened in the past, because the probably, I don't think the meetings were ever really, well, in the last couple of years anyway, they've never been concrete enough.
Right, to be on the, on the school calendar.
Yeah, but we do revisions and updates all the time, so I think that we should be sort of aware of that. Once October is set, we could update, add that. And then once they think about next year's spring.
And that's it?
And Chris, for those who should know this answer but don't, last day of school is Tuesday?
It is Tuesday, the 21st, so now you can go home and.
Thank you. Thank you, asking for a friend.
It's only a half day.
It is a half day, thank you very much.
And there is no school Monday.
There's no school Monday.
Yeah, so basically three day long weekend, and then with a half day.
So Monday.
People probably are going to skip the half.
Nope, they are not.
Monday, we are, Monday, we are recognizing Juneteenth, which is Sunday, and then, and then we'll have the half day on the 21st. And I'm sure that the principals are all communicating that well too, because they want to be clear that everybody knows.
Right.
Yes.
When the last day is.
Yes.
Right. School committee updates.
Well, I was just gonna add to the town meeting discussion that our central office feasibility and redistricting study was approved.
Yes, it was.
That's very exciting. So just, I guess, a request to keep us updated on that process. And the finance committee met last week, and we got a preview of tonight's agenda topic for the FY '22 review, look ahead. And we also talked, officially submitted that ARPA request for $14,000 in decodable texts for our PK to five schools, thanks to Gentry Traverso for helping word that. And that is on tomorrow night's select board agenda.
Other school committee updates?
I suppose policy briefly connected on Friday, and we confirmed and got those policies that are on the agenda tonight for votes. And we're gonna meet once more, I think, on Friday this week to wrap up and prep for the next school year.
Thank you. Hope those policies pass.
If they don't, we can call another meeting.
Yeah, that's right, that is correct. Okay, seeing no other updates.
We have no students.
And we have no students.
I know.
Their update is that they're enjoying summer, hopefully.
They want to check out for the last month.
Yep, yeah, absolutely.
Deservedly so, it just feels lonely.
Let's go back to our public comment. And Olga, so if you'd like to make your public comment now, we welcome hearing from you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Old Frank in 34 Cowlwood Drive. It's gonna be very short. I would like to express my deep concern regarding this statement that was put together by Dean of Student and to me, in particular, proposal number two. And language and consequences for taunting under student conduct. By using proposed handbook language, any sarcastic joke or any joke in general could be interpreted as violation of student conduct if the proposed statement is true. Does the First Amendment no longer apply in Westboro Public Schools? Who is going to decide in each case if it's so-called taunting? And I have to give it to you guys, I feel like Westboro School Board invented a time machine. With every new DI higher position, every new DI rule proposal, I feel like I'm literally going back to Soviet Union. You're amazing, Hugh, I don't know, you should patent this. It's creepy. And in extremely vague rules, very poorly defined, and the most important, completely give it to personal interpretation, was a known tactic that you use to control free speech in Soviet Union. And you are doing it to our kids, especially our adolescents, that we've known for doing some, you know, not so thought-through things, or saying, throwing there some things that they didn't think about. It's extremely disturbing, and that no condition should be added to student conduct in Westboro Academy. Thank you for your time.
Thanks. Just gonna change that. And I don't see anyone else for public comment. Do you want to respond, or do we have anything to public?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. Onto business items. Item number one is preliminary FY '22 Q4 financial update and special education stabilization reserve fund deposit.
Good evening, everyone. With the caveat, of course, that we're not finished the fourth quarter, so all of this is a projection, it's much easier to report when everything is done. I just wanted to call out some of the variables which are causing this to be more of a projection than actuality. Substitutes, we still have a couple of weeks of substitutes, because the records right now only reflect up to May 27th. We're taking a look at our utilities, and the facilities department is processing its end-of-year supply ordering. So both of those, all three of those things could dramatically move the needle as far as projected end-of-year balance. And then everything else can move it a little bit. So those are the big movers, but there are movers all throughout the entire budget. Based on the above assumptions, I would project between $75,000 and $100,000 end-of-year balance, but it could literally be 130, 140, there's that much movement. I have a block in there of $35,000, which has no cost associated with it, just as a placeholder, but just today, something came up for $10,800. So I'm feeling a little bit more positive about having made that decision. The projected balance does not, the FY '22 budget did not really use school choice funds, only about $12,000, because in the end, we didn't need it, we didn't need it. Okay, just kind of looking at a couple of the bigger, the larger movers. As anticipated, we had pretty hefty substitute usage. Thank goodness for the ARPA funds to help us out there, so that the 85 was really only against the general fund, about 18,000. But we would have been 85 had we not had the assistance of ARPA. As we've been talking about for months now, the added district transportation was a substantial hit. We budgeted in kind for next year, so, you know, if we're off a little bit, but we should not be off by $311,000, which is what the general fund overage was for FY '22. So all told, we were actually a little bit lower on the general fund tuition. We got a little bit of a break as the year went along with general fund tuition, but as I said, we still wound up above on that line because of the marriage of tuition and transportation. Looking ahead to next year, I am concerned next year about added district tuition projections. At this point, if everything stayed the way it's projected, we're about $361,000 over. And that general fund projection had a $100,000 placeholder in it, okay? So we would have been 461 if we didn't already have 100,000 in there, but we knew 100,000 was too low. It was just an extraordinarily tight budget to grow. So therefore, I think that kind of segues well into the conversation about the recommendation, which of course would have to be voted on you, by you. My recommendation would be that up to $100,000 in end-of-years fund available balance be transferred into the special education stabilization fund. So if you get 90,000, it's 90,000, if you get 101, it's 100. And then the excess of $100,000 goes back to the town. I don't think it was as clear as I should have been in this last line. It says if the general fund's end-of-year balance is in excess of 100,000, the monies will be, be returned to the town. What I should have said is the excess monies should be returned to the town, just to add clarity to that statement. Are there any questions on that?
Can I, it's more curiosity on the, you know how the special education, was it 311,000? Is that an increase, just an increase in the number of students out of district in general that we hadn't kind of planned for? Or is that like essentially gas prices and the cost of transport?
No, it's pretty much out of district placements. Yeah, it's pretty much out of district placements. Because, yeah, it's pretty much out of district placements.
How many, how many extra was that roughly, do you know?
I don't know, I can't, I'd rather not give bad data.
Okay. And that's okay.
Okay. That was the general fund. I did have a chance this afternoon to do a quick review of the revolving funds, but that's a big nut, because you call it revolving funds. But if you just think about all the subsets of the revolving funds, the only ones that I'm really couldn't speak to intelligently at this point are the food service and then the grants. Really, all I can say about the grants is that they're being managed, we're on target, we put in for our reimbursements, sometimes on our quarterly's. The expense exceeds the revenue, because we haven't gotten the revenue yet, because we filed and there's a delay. So there's really not much to say about there. What is, I think, rather interesting is the food service revolving fund. As a refresher, the district went into FY '21 with a balance of 470, 475,000, came out of it with 488,000, 488,000. Came out of FY '21 with 275, because that was a tough year, right? So we opened this year at 275. However, this is the year that the federal government is reimbursing all lunches at the free level. So at this point, we are estimating an excess of about 350,000, and it could come in even higher. So now, all of a sudden, we have a lot of money in the, in the revolving fund. And that's probably something that I would recommend, subject to review from my successor, because we're looking at possibly around $625,000. Now, the federal government at this point is not reimbursing to the free level for FY '23. However, there's some chatter that the state might think of it, I don't know where that's going to go. But if that happens at the state level, the money is the money, right? We're blind to the source, so I would consider that's probably something that the school committee and my successor wants to keep an eye on. A more in-depth analysis of all the activities within the revolving accounts will be provided and left for you, and I would assume presented in August. Should I go right into this?
And unless there are other questions? Okay.
I, I just have one question, can, can you try to refrain from saying successor too many times?
Sorry.
We're still dealing with that.
Yeah, exactly.
And then the last is just as we had previously discussed, is going to be deposits to the special education stabilization reserve fund are going to be presented to the school committee. I have the placeholder in here for the $100,000. Of course, we still have about two weeks left for the month, so there is a possibility that there'll be a supplemental request, although I don't, I don't think there will be, but that probably means I'm wrong. And so if there is, there'll be another one in August, bringing you up to speed for fourth quarter. But this is a snapshot of where we stand at this point in time.
And you think the change, any change would be, you're saying like how you have these listed out above, you think if there was anything else come in separately, not the 100?
No, no, not the 100,000. And to be honest with you, I don't think there'll be anything else, I think we're golden, but we'll see.
So we would just revisit the, the bottom line amount?
Um, I'd probably just have a supplemental in addition to the previously approved amount, there's this additional amount. And maybe at that point, we'd be able to fine tune where the 100,000 landed.
Right, okay, that sounds good. Any questions on that before we have a motion?
And I just wanted to take this 30 seconds to thank you. This has been a truly wonderful place to work. If it was anything less than as far as it is, I would have chosen to stay. I am so happy to have worked here, and I want to thank all of you.
We owe you a lot for this year. It was a pleasure to work with you. I think I speak for everyone when I say we're sad to see you go, but we're glad for the year that we had. And, I mean, we'd consider moving the district, right? Just a little further south.
But you've put us in, in a great place, just even the way, so I feel like that, the work you've done is tremendous.
I feel proud of my teams, both transportation and the food service, and most especially the business office team. I think you're left in good hands, I think you're in good shape, and I only speak highly of this district and only ever will.
Thank you, Pat, thank you so much.
Motion to approve the special education stabilization reserve fund deposits as outlined, including up to 100,000 from the general fund available funds.
Oh, second.
Yeah, it's a motion and a second, any comments or questions?
Did Pat hear that? That was good? That sounded okay, the motion?
Listen.
I think you would have loved it.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Oh.
You know, it's attendee, so that passes six oh. Mari is an attendee, but can't, because she's calling in, I can't move her to panelist. And so for now, it's just that she's not here. Luckily, she can hear us, I think, so she's at least up to speed.
Great.
And if the commute gets her here eventually, then we'll have her, and that'll be nice too. Okay. Next agenda item is our policies, our second reading and vote on our last batch of three, this was three batches of policies, right? In about a two, two-month period.
This is, this is wave three.
I feel like we're coming up the rocky steps.
Unbelievable.
So before we talk about it, we should do the motion.
Yes.
Motion to waive the second reading of policy P 6127, student photographs, P 3203, public hearing on budget, P 3502, procurement.
Second.
Okay. All in favor of waiving the readings of those policies? And that is six oh, thank you.
As Catherine indicated earlier, policy met on Friday, public comment for these policies closed Thursday. There was no public comment on any of these policies. We also did check and confirm with leadership that leadership had no additional comments or suggested changes. So these policies are presented to you in the same form that, that you've seen them for the last two meetings, and hope you will approve them as the end of wave three. And then, we're done.
For now.
For now, for now, yes. We're talking Friday about our future wish list.
Right, exactly.
Yeah. Yeah. So if every, anyone on the committee, I'm sorry, it's off topic, but yeah, if people have policies kind of on your radar screen that you want us to have on our radar screen for the fall, we're, we're keeping a list and we'll hit the ground running in the fall.
Powerful duo coming back for next year.
Yeah.
We might find somebody yet as well. It's a torture.
Fantastic. Do we have a motion on these three policies?
Oh.
I don't touch.
Who wants to go? Okay, mo, motion, motion to approve P 6127, P 3203, and P 3502 as outlined in the packet.
Second.
That's a motion and a second, any discussion on those three policies from the committee?
Nope, just thank you.
That's what I was gonna say. Thank you, folks. Good work. Okay, I'm gonna call for the vote, all in favor? And that is six oh. The next step, take it off draft form. Mark it as update, yeah, we'll do all that.
I did that on the last five?
Yeah, yeah, that's true.
I did, I didn't break your airtable. Didn't break it.
We'll get there.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next up is the summer warrant approval process. And so this is so, we have one designee signing the warrants during the summer, so that we don't need to all, or we don't need to have four of us come here and sign them. And we are allowed to do this, and we have done this every summer. And I'm open to suggestions for who wants to do that. And we've often had a primary and a backup.
That's what I talked about.
Right, so that's good, just so if you're away, or you just can't, one week. And it continues to be bi-weekly over the summer? Same schedule?
Yep.
I'm happy to offer, but I am away for three weeks.
That is true, you are.
We have something called a DocSign.
Got a DocuSign, that'd be amazing.
I am not leaving the state for the whole, I'm sorry, I am not leaving the region for the whole summer, so I'm happy to be primary and/or secretary.
I like that.
Either for any of them, all of them.
So let's call you primary?
Sure.
I can be secondary?
Okay.
Between the two of us, we'll get it done.
I don't know what that motion sounds like, we just.
Do we, do we vote on that?
Of course.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, we do.
Yes.
Yeah, we do, because the committee has to designate that.
Okay. Motion to designate Valerie Young as primary and Chris Sanders as secondary for authorized summer warrant approval signers on behalf of the school committee.
Second.
Honored to you, right, a secondary, you, do we need to vote together, the primary and the secondary?
I'm gonna say we don't, but do you want to? Do you approve of one of us but not the other?
I mentioned them both. I said them both, right?
No, you only said one.
No, I think she said both.
Really?
I thought you were requesting that we separate them.
Yeah.
No, no.
No, I said Valerie Young and secondary Chris Sanders.
No, I, I didn't hear a secondary, that's my question.
It's because there was a, there was a snicker about her saying her own name, and that distracted us all from the rest of the.
I didn't snicker, you're pointing at me, I didn't snicker.
I think, I think the sniggering was here. I will cough up to the sniggering.
Yeah, because I, I saw you only said you only.
I'll offer.
I know.
A hypothetical friendly amendment, if you didn't say me as secretary, secretary, secondary, let's add that. Okay, any discussion? All right, all in favor? Okay, congrats to us, six oh.
Apparently you're responsible. Or just boring summer people.
Okay, next up is our non-union personnel FY '23 salary approvals, which I have right here.
Yes.
So as, as we discussed, the recommendation is for a 2% increase, and you can see how that's outlined with the salaries.
Okay. Comments or questions?
I know that there are, there are a couple that are not people who have gone into their positions very recently. It doesn't reflect that same, that same increase, so if there are questions about that. But the, the increases that are there are the 2%.
And the committee has seen this, and this will go into the packet retroactively sometime after tonight's vote, assuming this. after tonight's vote, assuming that we vote affirmatively on these. Thanks for putting this together. Any comments or questions from the committee?
Thank you, Pat and Carrie.
Yeah.
Pat and Carrie helped put that one together.
Absolutely. Anything from the committee on these?
Motion to approve the FY23 non-union salaries as presented in the salary schedule from executive session.
Second.
With a motion and a second. Any last discussion? Okay, all in favor? Okay, unanimous, 6-0. Thank you. This is what's called cruising through your agenda.
I was supposed to say.
You feel bored?
Oh, this is good, this is good, this is good. There are no complaints. We're allowed to have one a year.[649.61][649.64](laughing).
Right, right, exactly.
And if it's not this one.
Subcommittee assignments. Did everyone get a chance to look at these? If you haven't, look at them, and we're all comfortable with those. I, I wanna say just like enormous loads of gratitude. Why am I not seeing it in our, oh, it's at the bottom, sorry. To everyone, I mean, this is a lot. This is a lot that this committee does outside of these meetings every two weeks, and I hope the community looks and sees all of that, because people probably don't know everything. You know, you don't, you hear things here and there, but to see it listed, it's, it's good work, and I'm just really appreciative for everyone's willingness to step up and do more. It's, it's huge. One note, because as we were looking at this, we have added subcommittees, we add, have added liaison opportunities, we did say, let's make the default on a subcommittee for this year, two people. Let's not try to get people, you know, get as many people in everywhere, getting subcommittees of three, let's start it with two. But there's opportunity for three on any subcommittee. So some, we already have identified a third person, but in some cases, we said, let's start with two. And so I would point out, those subcommittees per this list would be policy, superintendent goals and evaluation. Those are the two primary ones that could accommodate a third person. And so if someone here is not on those and wants to be, let, let the folks on that committee and me know, and.
Send your resume.
There's, it's in your resume. I think you'll get accepted.
Nominate yourself.
I think you'll get accepted. But I'm excited, I think this is, this is pretty exciting and really good. Work is coming down the way for next year.
And, yeah, it's just that the list grows.
The list definitely grew, yeah. Doesn't have to grow every year.
Right.
It seems to.
You don't have to add things next year. But this was, this was sort of an unusual year with several new items that really made sense.
Yeah.
And not like something, you know, not all of them will be meeting like every two weeks, like policy or finance.
Right, right. And we tried to balance, keep that in mind and balance it and work with people's schedules, so. And I guess for people, well, I'm gonna read the list. We have a policy subcommittee, a finance subcommittee, a collective bargaining subcommittee, we have a CPAC liaison, LPAC liaison, we have a new superintendent goals and evaluation subcommittee, we have the new about-to-began Strategic District Improvement Plan Advisory Group that Dr. Chu already spoke of, and then we have school committee members who will attend the superintendent's diversity, equity, and inclusion team and calendar committees, and then we have liaisons to town and community committees, including capital planning, town and school safety task force, DEI committee, Westford CAT, pedestrian safety committee, and the new rec center working group, which we should tell Chris Barrett, by the way.[841.01][841.04](laughing). True to me that I haven't told him that we said we would try to send somebody.
I think they might be on tomorrow's select board agenda.
Yeah, they, I think they are, yeah. Okay, so that's very exciting, and I don't think we need to vote on that. I think we've designated those folks, and everyone, as long as everyone feels good about that, if you have any comments later, we can discuss it, but those will be our subcommittees for next year. And that brings us up to our elections for officers for the committee for next year, at which point I believe I turn things over to Dr. Chu to officiate.
Yes.
The solicitation of nominations and the votes.
Yes, so I would officially ask if there are any nominations for, for the position of chair of the school committee.
I nominate Chris Sanders.
Second.
Are there any other nominations?
Compete.
Okay, so with.
Dance battle.
With, with that being said, I would ask then for you to vote, right? Because if you then elect him, I can then stop doing this and he can take over.[919.61][919.64](laughing).
You should have done the other ones first.
So, so I, so the motion would be to approve or elect Chris Sanders as the school committee chair for the FY23 school year.
Is it a nomination and then a motion? Or does a nomination count as a motion?
Oh, maybe it does.
It is a motion.
It is a motion. No, because there could theoretically be multiple. That's why I asked for, yeah, that's true, because I asked for others and there weren't any. I'll second the superintendent's motion. Thank you, okay. All in favor?
Can he motion?
No, I think the committee has to make the motion.
Yeah, I don't think.
Still moved.
I say some.
So I'll second it, yeah. Woo, see, you don't want me doing this.[963.21][963.24](laughing). So then, all in favor? Yeah, there we go.
Sure.
Oh, and you, oh, excellent, okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Chris.
6-0.
Yeah, thank you.
So now I turn it back over to you as the, as the chair.[977.31][977.34](laughing).
All right, so we're looking for nomi, I'm still like trying to figure out if it's a motion or nomination, but.
Well, I think it still goes into what happened was, because it was, I asked for nominations.
Yeah, and then someone has to.
And then nobody, there wasn't, right, there, it wasn't contested.
And then somebody can move a particular candidate. I think that makes sense. It's been confusing in the past, especially if there's multiple candidates.
Yeah.
So I will take any nominations for vice chair, and I will also nominate, I will kill the awkward silence of waiting for a nomination and nominate Valerie Young as vice chair.
And I will second, is that what we?
No, I think we're still looking for other nominations.
Now, she's still in the nomination process.
Oh, I get you now, okay.
Any nominations, other nominations for vice chair? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
We should ask her, do you accept?
Do you accept such a nomination?
That's true, we didn't ask.
Yeah, we don't, we don't give them, we don't give them choices.
I would say it.
Okay, now I'm looking for a motion.
Motion to appoint, or elect.
Elect.
Okay, elect Valerie Young as vice chair for FY23.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
It would be kind of funny if it was five to one.
And I will accept nominations for secretary, which I always want to call clerk, but it's secretary.
I will nominate Catherine Clear.
I have just.
Just doing such a great job on those minutes.
Do you accept?
I do accept.
That is lovely. Any other nominations for secretary?
Sure, guys. Go on, Mar.
I don't see any others, okay.
I'm a one who'd be.
I need a motion.
I'll move to have Catherine Clear appointed as secretary for the 2023 academic year.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you.
You, you did a good writing.
Can I just say something, though, before we move on? I mean, I'm assuming we're all gonna do this. Honestly, to both you and Val, this last year, I think you two did a phenomenal job. I don't know, guiding us through all the blips along the way this year, and I'm really happy that the dynamic duo is back again for, for next year. But please, learn to delegate more.
You asked for it.
No, honestly, it's been lovely, really lovely, working with both of you, and I think you've done an awesome job.
Well, it was a good year, and I think knowing that we're gonna be kind of in the same teaming arrangement makes it exciting for another year, and we're, we learned a lot.
Good team.
Yep. So it's gonna be, it's gonna be a good year.
Yeah, looking forward.
Yeah.
Good team.
Yay!
Batman and Robin.
Okay, restorative process update.
Would you want to start?
Sure, I mean, I'll start with some impressions, because it is our last meeting, and I know we've, we've kind of talked about it, we've had it on the agenda. I wanted to recap and just give some of my impressions and say, and, you know, for folks who might be watching, for folks who saw events unfold that caused community concern, and I know there was concern in this committee and the administration, and I, I'm actually pleased with how seriously things were taken, and I know that's, that's been a concern in the past, that things happen and maybe we don't hear about them. And so I think, I feel like that, that's a success, that we did make it a real focus of, of conversation, of pulling together events and resources and personnel. I think, you know, WA staff, for example, spent more time on this, you know, than maybe you would have ever thought, you know, if something like this happened. I'm very appreciative of that. I'm appreciative of the work in getting the communities together. A lot of people went down to Wayland for an event down there. We, we had events here, we had restorative events here that were virtual, and we had the teams getting together, and I think that's a huge success as well. I mean, that's part of the healing, that's part of the, the process of people seeing each other and, and hearing each other's concerns and experiences, and so I, I think that, that's huge. And again, maybe things that wouldn't have happened in the past, and so I'm thankful for that. I think there's growth to be had, I think we've talked about that, there are things that we learned from this, you know, it's no secret that I, you know, I was in favor of a restorative approach because I've seen what it can do, and I, and I still believe in that, and I think, but I also, I learned personally that that's, it takes time to develop that. And I'm thankful for the people we brought in, outside consultants and folks who helped us along with that, but I, there's a recognition on my part that all that takes time to kind of imbue some of those practices and philosophies into what you do. And I'm grateful to you for help, kind of helping, helping us through that and championing that. And so, but I also know that there's, there's people who feel like there's more that could have been done in certain areas, and I hear that as well. And so I look forward to what comes next and how we learn and grow from this as, as the adults and the leaders in the school system, how we grow and say, what did we do right, and what are things that next time, you know, we'll learn from. Hopefully, there won't be a next time, but, you know, there's always something that you can apply this sort of thing to.
Yeah, that very well said. I, I think we have, it definitely, the, the events that took place in January made us pause, right? And so we really had to reflect, and I think as we've been trying to move through the spring, and we had very certain plans that we tried to execute and things that we wanted to see happen, I think some of it was successful, I think like you were just saying, I think some of it was not as successful. I, I do think that the, the, one of the things that I've learned is how important it is for us to truly dive in deeper to what I think smaller community conversations that can take place with restorative practices through the community circles, when we've talked about trying to bring that, starting at Westford Academy, and then bringing that to the, to all of our schools as well, for that practice to be truly embedded into what we do is, is, is something very important that we need to do moving forward, right? Because the positive impact that that has proactively is huge, and what we saw was even some of the conversations that we wanted to have, no matter how, no matter how much we wanted, for example, our student forum or different listening opportunities for us to have, to not be a one-and-done type activity, because we know that that's not effective, the reality of space and time, without having community circles as a regular practice, it, it does make it very difficult for it not to feel like a one-and-done conversation when you have 300 or 400 people together, right? And it's, and so, so I feel like the proactive work that we did, the, the collaboration that we did with Wayland, I, I do believe was very helpful for us as a community and for us as individuals to learn and to reflect, and I think that that's been something very important for us to be modeling for all of our students as well, too. I think that there was some, there was, there was some wonderful movement within the student body in, in voices being amplified and students speaking up, students, students sharing their concerns with us, things like the, the changes that, that we've already looked at for the handbook at Westford Academy, having, I think, a very clear statement, I think that those are very positive things that have come out of, of, of these discussions. And I think the communication with the community needs to be improved. We need to be able to, to improve that, and I, and I, I know that like I plan to continue to reach out to even our partners with the select board, right, in ways that, that they, they're representing everybody in the town in ways that we're representing the schools, and they're, they, they might have avenues that we don't necessarily have to reach out to people, and so it might be a way of, of connecting with them when we do need to share information with, with a larger audience as well, too, which I think can be helpful. So I just feel like, and I, I 100% want to thank you, too, because I, I feel like your, your guidance and your commitment as the chair, and in all of the conversations that we were having, because I wasn't familiar with restorative practices, I, I, not as, I mean, I thought I was, let's put it that way, right? I thought I was, but then as you get into it, you realize just what you don't know, and I, and I just think your championing that work was, was very important, and we have so much more to do, and that's what we see now, right? So I think that that's really, really important.
Thank you. And I would, oh, Maria.
Hi.
Thank you. You can tell us about the commute later, it sounds very exciting.
We finished it all of our team.
We're here just in time.
We're on our last business items.
Yeah, literally, Main Street was closed, there was a police officer at like every station.
That's what happened when we came over.
Well, we're, we're so happy to see you, and sorry, no, no, like, yeah, you were, you, it was a Herculean effort that you put in to stay with us.
We can get our phones in there.
Yes.
Not today.
So, and I, I want to open up the committee, too, but one other thing I was thinking, you know, part of what you want to see, or the primary thing you want to see happen once, when, when you have an incident like this, or you have an occurrence, you want to make sure a couple of things, you want to make sure that those most impacted are feeling like they're being heard and seen and, and made whole as much as possible, right? And then the other is that you want those who have perpetrated something to learn from it and not, not do that again. You want to see growth. And so I do think that there was opportunity for both. I know that individuals involved did learn about some of the impacts of what they did, there were meetings in which they heard from members of the community, they heard, you know, they've certainly heard from the community in a number of ways, but directly a little bit as well. I know that the individual victim in this case, we, we were, have been in contact, there have been visits from, from personnel from Westford to, to check in and, and see how that person's doing, and to pass along an apology letter from one of the individuals as well. And so I want to highlight some of that work that aims to meet those, those, those two things I mentioned, you know, making the victim, you know, feel as much whole as possible and having some learning and growth from the individuals. But I want to highlight that going forward, those individuals, you know, while still in our community in some way, may not, may not be involved in future incidents, and now it's on us to make sure that we as a community and as a school system grow in a similar way. How do we make sure that we've learned from that? And I know we've talked a little bit, I, I mean, I, I'd be interested in having some sort of final outreach with Wayland. You know, maybe, maybe we contact the Wayland School Committee and see what personnel it makes sense from the two communities to, to come together, do a restorative circle in the aftermath of this, and talk about what things went well, what things didn't didn't go well, what things did we learn, what things do we still need to work on, maybe to make this particular situation right as well. I mean, there might be more that we can do, you know, that we're not completely turning the page on this, there might be more we can do. I mean, we've had, our personnel have been in contact with them all throughout, but I feel like one more culminating, kind of debriefing restorative circle could be helpful for us to say, okay, what did we, what did we learn, again, as the adults and the leaders in Westford Public Schools and in Wayland Public Schools, what did we learn, and how do we use that going forward?
Yeah, I think that that would be an excellent idea, if we were able to bring the two groups together.
Okay.
And my thoughts on, so what I was going to suggest, Chris, is that we have kind of a debrief, and you covered that, but what I think might be helpful if we can show the community maybe our work product, right? If we can somehow accumulate this into, you know, some sort of document or something as to, you know, here's where we came from, here's what, and you've done a great job at updating the committee from week to week. And that way, we can see how far we've come along, and then also, you know, it's a good check-in, right? Because we're at the end of the year, and we want to make sure that what worked continues on and things like that. And maybe it falls within, like, the DEI team, or, you know, the strategic improvement plan or something like that, but I'd be curious to see that, or, so that way, maybe we can revisit it next year this time, or hopefully sooner than that, but, and make sure that we're still doing what we kind of promised the community that we would do.
Can I ask a question? I feel bad, like, coming in at this time and then asking like a kind of a, not like a Debbie Downer question, but there was a DEI session that was scheduled and that was going to be rescheduled, and then it was not rescheduled, right?
There was going to be a community circle, we'd had one.
Second.
And we were going to do a second, and there was at some point just the decision that we were hearing, maybe it's been too long, you know, like, maybe the time gap made it such that it wasn't feeling like it was going to be as productive, you know, versus had it been right when we had, you know, we tried to schedule and then it didn't happen then, yes. And so I think we can be open to, like, do we still want to do another one? I mean, we can do, you know, I think it's really, I think we can do what feels right for the community if people are still feeling like they need that. Yeah.
Because I think people were looking forward to it, and I think that's the only reason why I'm raising it, and I understand that, you know, time, you know, whatever, it didn't happen, but just as we are saying, like, we should have another check-in, it's like a similar vibe, like.
Well, I think, and I think that's a good point, I think we could definitely put that out to see if there was, if there's interest, because we thought that too much time had gone by and that it might not be as productive, but you're right, that's not checking in with the people who want to speak up. That's a good point.
Thank you. Catherine?
I would like to kind of circle back on, I mean, I love the idea of another, you know, a community circle, but I think from some of the conversations I've had with members in our community, you know, a lot of, a lot of the restorative process in some ways happened behind closed doors, and, you know, understandably so, you know, for some aspects of it. But I think, you know, some of it maybe needs to also be a genuine public discussion and a real debrief or a kind of conversation about, you know, well, what exactly did this look like in the high school? Kind of what were the kind of the different things, the components that took place there? And, you know, bringing Jim Antonelli and Dr. Michelle Shannon and pathways to restorative justice kind of involved in a public conversation about it, I think, is something that the community probably need to hear and to kind of give a bit more transparency and understanding to the whole process. And, you know, you talk about kind of doing another maybe restorative circle with our Wayland counterparts to kind of close on it, and again, maybe we have a conversation with those Wayland counterparts that is in a more public way and an opportunity, because I think I was remote for the Wayland conversation, for the Wayland Town Hall.
Yeah.
And, you know, we were on, in our breakout room, we were discussing kind of, you know, the parameters we've been set out, and we were just beginning to actually genuinely talk specifically about the incident, and we didn't, we ran out of time, and a number of people have kind of felt that we've talked a lot around what happened, but maybe some of it feels to me like we also need to kind of talk specifically about it and how kind of, just to give people a chance to kind of hear, so I would be hoping we get a bit more, like Sean was saying, you know, kind of what's our work product? What really worked well in the high school specifically, and what didn't, and what needs tweaking, and do we need to hire more resources, you know, moving forward for next year to support it and to really self-reflect, you know, because I don't think we got a lot of it right. We got a good chunk of it right, but, you know, we all need to kind of self-reflect on that, but that's just my two cents.
No, thank you.
I think one of the things that I came away from when I went to the Wayland Town Meeting was that my little group from Wayland was like, this could have happened in Wayland. And I felt like that was a really terrific perspective from them to say, you know, this was something that could have happened here, and so we're eager to work together to prevent it from happening again. And I think that as much as it's important to regroup with them, I think it's important for us to continue to do the self-examining, that it's not just about Wayland, that it's like about being a community that tells kids that this behavior is not okay.
Yep.
Agreed, that's why I kind of feel like there are two parts, right? There's, there is definitely the conversation and then, and the ability to sort of, to figure out, does more work need to be done with Wayland? And then there's our internal continuing to say, okay, we know that, we know that more work needs to be done, so we know that, and so we're going to continue doing that, and so at what point does it not become about Wayland?
Yeah.
Right?
Right.
And in some ways, that was some of the conversations that came from the follow-up even of the athletic conversations that took place in the spring, was that this was, this seemed to be a very positive experience for the students and for the coaches involved, and can it now actually be replicated with another town? So that it's truly like, you know, people are, we're collaborating and competing, we're in this together idea, like, you work with a different DCL, and if Wayland works with another team in the DCL, is that something that they could actually expand through the DCL that becomes a practice that's, it's helping on many levels? But then again, that is an opportunity for our athletes, but not for people who aren't athletes, right? So we have to keep looking at that as well, too, which kind of goes back to my thought about really the benefit of really trying to determine and figure out how community circles as a model at the academy with so many students there could really become a beneficial way for them to have these small groups where they know each other well, they're creating safe spaces to have various conversations, and it becomes a different, it just becomes a different foundation, right? That, you know, outside of, you know, the classes that they have every single day and that they get to know where they're having rich conversations in it, there isn't anything that's not necessarily in a class, and so if we were able to kind of look at that model and what it could look like for them, I think it would be beneficial for being very proactive moving forward.
It's like circling back to how you started the year, to keep brushing our teeth.
That's right, that's right, that's absolutely true.
And it's so much easier, the preventative is so much easier, right? Like, it's rather than responding to anything, right? Anything that's a crisis, you know, it's great that you can respond well to a crisis, but when you can prevent it and you can build the culture and the infrastructure to see things coming, to stem things off and to create, you know, create the culture that.
We're educators, that's what we're supposed to be. Doing is education.
Any other comment?
Yeah, I was just going to add that, I'm sorry, I feel like I always weigh in on money, but.
Thank, no, thank you for keeping that in mind.
Just that, to remind everyone that we submitted a plan for restorative justice practices on our first list of high priority ARPA requests, and it was put on hold by the select board, so it's not specifically called out on their agenda tomorrow night, but I'll be asking for a follow-up on when they plan to revisit those.
I would appreciate that, yeah.
And to that point, that's actually something that Chris and I have talked about recently. I think that there is concern from, you know, from members of the community that the restorative process didn't work, right? So if it didn't work, then why would you invest and spend money to do that? And that's kind of where I'm like, well, wait a second, no, a lot of what we did do, I think, was effective, but where it wasn't, it's because it wasn't a best practice that's embedded into what we're already doing. That's, so it actually, that's the main reason why it's important for us to look at ways to kind of train the staff and to train the students as to how these community circles can be truly beneficial.
I think they were missing, though, that communication component, you know, I can understand how some community members really don't understand, you know, how do we measure the effectiveness of this? What were the things done? What were the things achieved? And I think that would be really helpful, you know, for some of our community to kind of really understand what the benefits of restorative, because it truly goes beyond, you know, diversity issues. I mean, when you truly embrace restorative practices, it goes right down to kindergarten levels, you know, in terms of figuring out who's going to be sharing toys or not sharing toys and all those squabbles that happen. I mean, it, it's a truly kind of new approach to, you know, consequences and punishments, and it just expands beyond just kind of that idea of diversity, you know.
Absolutely.
So it's, I think it's really important that we, as a school committee and administration, start championing maybe, you know, this approach, because it truly is the kind of the way for education moving forward in terms of kind of theory and philosophies and how kind of schools can support students, you know, in a positive way, so I think we got to start talking more.
Yep, thank you for that.
It's never a problem for me.
Other comments? And I just, I really liked the comments tonight, and I actually think I want to follow up with you folks individually a little bit, too, and like have more, like, talk a little bit more, because it gives ideas to me, and just go a little bit deeper on some of that. And so I appreciate it. Anything else on that?
We could add another subcommittee.
I think there's enough.
Sorry.
Take our slice of sugar.
Sorry, a little punchy.
Probably you'll have to wait another month, because mine's now, today.
I don't have any more business on the agenda. I'm at the bottom.
And this, yep, this is a good thing, it's a good thing.
Yeah, no, it was good.
Motion for June.
I heard it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.